I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Village Board for February 26, 2019. Please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Village Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President DeSimone?
Here.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Franz?
Here.
Trustee Jaworska?
Here.
Trustee Lomax?
Here.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Here.
Trustee Perez?
Here.
That's six. We have a court.
A public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement between the Village of Bensonville in the following locations: 4 N 401 Hawthorne Avenue, parcel number 03-23-303-001, and 4 N 360 Hawthorne Avenue, parcel number 03-23-302-012. We will now open the public hearing on a proposed annexation agreement between those two addresses. If any persons would like to speak during the public hearing on the annexation agreement, I ask that you please approach the podium and state your name and comment. Seeing none, this will conclude the...this will conclude the public hearing on the Village's proposed annexation agreement. We will proceed with the regular order of business. We will now move to public comment. Does anyone wish to address the board? If so, please approach the podium and state your name.
Mr. Paul DeMichael?
I'll remind everyone that public comment's limited to three minutes.
I am Paul DeMichael. I live at 17W 275 Rodak Lane. I attended the January 8th meeting where the village manager listed a bunch of meetings that were held on the downtown business development. It took me a little while and some digging, and I got some more information on it. The...held two meetings on it, two public hearings. Nine people attended the first hearing, and two people attended the second. This really wasn't a ground swell at these meetings. Not sure why that happened. But anyway, I finally got a map of what the parking was going to look like after the improvements. The parking goes from forty-six spaces on Center Street to twenty-four. It goes from twenty-two spaces on Green Street to eight. It's supposed to be replaced by more parking spaces, but if the parking spaces are north of the tracks, it really doesn't help the downtown development. I did a little research at IDOT, and I'm still waiting for more information from them. IDOT has dropped the designations FAU, FAS, and FAP. These numbers are no longer used to depict route information, including functional classification or funding eligibility. That's a direct quote from IDOT. You know, none of the contracts have been let on this thing yet. The board...any board member can remove an item from the consent agenda and open up for discussion because amazingly, no discussion was present at the meeting that you had last week on this subject. So I'm wondering, did the board ever discuss this, or ever discuss it in an open meeting? No contracts have been let, so it's possible to change this project. There is time to do this, and you should really look at doing it.
Thank you.
Mr. George Jeffries?
Yeah, the podium has a mic on it, so it'll allow us to hear you better.
My name is George Jeffries, trustee for Bensonville Fire Protection District One. I'm here to deliver a letter from the attorney, Pat Bond, to the board.
If you want to give a copy of that to the village clerk, it'll become a part of the public comment.
Thank you.
Is that it? Mr. Jeffries just got to enter that upon the record? Are you just going to enter that upon the record, or do you have any more comment? Thank you.
Gina Millenton?
Hi Gina Millenton, 4 N 150 Pine Grove, Bensonville. And I just wanted to...I had mentioned before regarding the annexation of homes that are not contiguous to Bensonville. They do not touch Bensonville. I just suggest that you think before you vote this evening on the homes, and make sure that you know that they...if they touch contiguous property, if they're contiguous to Bensonville's property. I just want you to think before you vote.
Thanks Gina.
Mr. James Cook?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is James Cook. I am a sixty-two-year resident of White Pines. My parents built our house out in White Pines back in the mid-fifties, and I think they did it because it was of the affordability of it. I now see a few signs in my neighborhood that there...say that there is strength through annexation. I beg to differ. Where is the financial strength for the residents of White Pines when we have to forfeit a portion of our bank accounts, retirement savings plans, and social security to instead benefit the pension plans of the administration of Bensonville by way of higher taxes if annexation becomes a reality? Also, where is the strength when more regulations, known as ordinances, are imposed upon the residents? And where is our privacy when spy cars, known as code enforcement officers, roam our neighborhood, as they do in Bensonville, looking for infractions to levy tickets against us? These questions and many more lead me to believe the truth of the words that our late, great President Ronald Reagan once said, and that is, "Government is not the solution to the problem. Government is the problem." And he went on to say also that, "Man is not free unless government is limited." In my opinion, and this is my opinion, I feel that we, the residents of White Pines, are free under our current level of limited government. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Gary Gardner?
I'm going to...not happy with what I've got here, so I'm going to save it for later.
We look forward to it.
This will conclude public comment. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the February 12, 2019 Village Board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion? Are there any modifications to the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries and minutes are now approved. The next item of business is to approve the warrant in the amount of $475,047.75. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
You have a motion?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the warrant? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona? Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the warrant is now approved. Would the deputy clerk please read the ordinances and resolutions on the consent agenda that were discussed at the committee of the whole meeting?
Number one, ordinance approving a tax amendment to the village code for a White Pines neighborhood overlay. Number two, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 240 Church. Number three, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 252 Church. Number four, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 323 Hawthorne. Number five, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 324 Church Road. Number six, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 385 Hawthorne. Number seven, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 386 Church Road. Number eight, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 16W 603 White Pine. Number nine, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 401 Hawthorne. Number ten, ordinance approving the annexation agreement for 4 N 360 Hawthorne. Number eleven, ordinance annexing 4 N 401 Hawthorne Avenue. Number twelve, ordinance annexing 4 N 371 Hawthorne into the Village of Bensonville. Number thirteen, ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a daycare center at 227 West Grand Avenue. Number fourteen, ordinance approving the annexation of the vacant home site located at 6 N 164 Spruce Avenue. Number fifteen, ordinance approving a map amendment and lot width variance to allow a single-family home at 6 N 164 Spruce Avenue. Number sixteen, resolution supporting the granting of a Cook County Class 6B real estate tax assessment classification for the certain...for certain property commonly known as 1011 Sesame Street, Bensonville, Illinois. Seventeen, ordinance amending section 3-3-5 of the Bensonville Village Code, increasing the number of Class F liquor licenses from two to three. Number eighteen, ordinance of the Village of Bensonville, DuPage, Cook Counties, Illinois, amending the Bensonville Village Code to modify the penalties for offenses concerning cannabis and drug paraphernalia. Nineteen, resolution approving a retail sale agreement between the Village of Bensonville and AVI Systems, Inc. for the purchase and installation of cameras as part of the Village Boardroom system upgrade in the amount of $24,196. Number twenty, resolution authorizing the 2019 approved vendor list for Village Department's utilizing parts, equipment, and services. Twenty-one, ordinance amending...
Hold on Cory. Cory, one second. I'm off a number. You're reading twenty-one, and it's my twenty. Did we skip something? Are you right? Because I'm...
It might be that 6 N 164 Spruce Avenue. We divided it into two agenda items.
Where's that at?
Number fourteen and number fifteen.
Number fourteen, I have the ordinance approving an annexation map amendment and variance to allow a single-family home.
Mm-mm.
6 N 164 Spruce. Fifteen, I have a resolution supporting the granting of a Cook County Class 6B...
Right, so that's the ordinance that was split into two on Friday?
So, so let me just make sure this is right. Ordinance approving is one, and map amendment is two?
Correct.
Mine's right.
Mine's right, too.
Mine's not right. Okay. Sorry about that. Just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Twenty-one, ordinance amending village code Title VIII Public Ways and Properties, Chapter Three Public Improvements, Section Four Bidding on Public Works and Other Public Improvements to Updating...to Update Bidding Limits. Twenty-two, resolution authorizing the execution of a construction engineering service agreement for the 2019 water main improvements project with Hancock Engineering Company in the not-to-exceed amount of $93,652. Twenty-three, resolution authorizing the execution of an engineering service agreement with Civil Tech Engineering for the Downtown Streetscape Project South Half in the amount of $198,427. Twenty-four, resolution authorizing the execution of a local agency agreement with Illinois Department of Transportation for grant funding associated with the Downtown Streetscape Project South Half. Twenty-five, resolution appropriating the required local match funds, including nonparticipating costs in a total amount of $1,859,131 for the Downtown Streetscape Project South Half. Six, twenty-six, ordinance prohibiting the use of groundwater as a potable water supply by the installation or use of potable water supply wells or by any other method in the designated area near 491 and 591 Supreme Drive in the Village of Bensonville, Illinois. Twenty-seven, resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing a purchase order to Standard Equipment Company in Chicago, Illinois, a sole-source proprietor for the purchase of sewer camber equipment for environmental site cameras system in the not-to-exceed amount of $25,726. Twenty-eight, resolution authorizing an ice arena license and facility use agreement with the Amateur Hockey Association of Illinois. Twenty-nine, resolution authorizing the execution of a facility rental use agreement with Chris Imis Hockey. Thirty, resolution authorizing the execution of an ice arena and facility use license agreement between the American Hearing Impaired Hockey Association and the Village of Bensonville. Thirty-one, resolution authorizing a facility rental use agreement with Planet Hockey, Inc. Thirty-two, resolution authorizing the execution of a facility rental use agreement with Greg Carter's European Hockey School. Thirty-three, resolution authorizing a facility use license agreement with Legacy Global Sports, Inc. Thirty-four, resolution authorizing a facility use license agreement with 200x85 LLC for the Shite Town Shuffle. Thirty-five, resolution authorizing a facility use license agreement with HHD Hockey. Thirty-six, resolution to approve an amendment to the standard form of agreement between the Village of Bensonville and White Construction Service, Inc.
Is there a motion to approve the thirty-six resolutions and ordinances listed on the consent agenda and is read by the deputy clerk?
You have a motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and items on the consent agenda are now approved. Moving on to administration, a resolution in support of the interim fly quiet program. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
So I'll just briefly go over what this resolution is. This is in support of the interim fly quiet, which is the precursor to the...what's being called the Fly Quiet 21, which is a nighttime rotation plan. We're hoping to use the interim fly quiet as the bridge to get to the permanent fly quiet program. The FAA public comment period is currently underway. What we'll do is after...if we approve this letter, we will approve this resolution. We'll submit a copy to the FAA as part of the public record. The village president and I have already submitted a letter in support of the rotate...of the interim fly quiet plan.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's five.
The motion carries and the resolution is approved. Moving on to public works, number one is a 2019 capital investment program presentation.
We have Mahul Patel with us today. He's going to go over the season's construction projects. We've got a lot to look forward to and to be concerned about because it will tear up some of the town, but it's all good stuff in the long run. So I'll hand it over to Mr. Patel.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing this opportunity to highlight the 2019 CIP program. We did this in 2018, and I'll try to get to the similar theme as we did last year. First project on the list here is the 2019 water main improvements. The contract status is currently out to bid. It's due on March 7. The engineer's estimate currently is at $1 million, $5 million. We're anticipating a start date of tentative April 4, and a substantial completion of June 20, except the landscaping portion. Final completion September 27, 2019. That includes all the landscaping and punch list items. Scope of work includes almost 3,500 feet of 8-inch water main replacement, ADA water services, sidewalk repairs, scrubbing gutter repairs, pavement removal and replacement. The location is highlighted in blue over there. It's between Jefferson and Washington Street, on Marion, on Rock Stand. We got Virginia, and we got Memorial and Washington between Marion and Marion. Moving on to one of the major projects of the year is your quarter lapo, Randy Avenue to Green Street. Current contract status, it was awarded to K5 Construction. The contract amount is $1,878,874, of which $1,223,691 is funded through the Esti Company. We are anticipating a start date of April 2, and the final completion date of this contract is June 30, plus five working days for the punch list items. Scope of work includes 51,000 square yards of pavement removal, 6,500 tons of plastic asphalt binder, 5,800 tons of surface, spot sidewalk removals and repairs, scrubbing gutter removal and repairs, ADA patching, striping, pedestrian signal improvements, et cetera. While the major components of this project will be traffic controlled, we're anticipating traffic will be anticipating...will be experiencing delays throughout the project as we're going to be doing construction with length orders on daily basis. Next on the list, I have the 2019 Blue Stream Improvement Project that's located off Irving Park Road, Eastview and Flanston Street. Currently, we're in design for this project. We're estimating the construction cost will be $1.1 billion. $400,000 CDVG funds are recommended for this project as well. Anticipated start date is fall 2019, pending the CDVG award and execution of the agreement. So chance of completion right now is dating at spring and summer 2020. Scope of work, resurfacing both streets, spot sidewalk and curb gutter removals, ADA improvements, protein under feet of 8-inch water main on Eastview, landscaping, et cetera. Project has been recommended for funding through CDVG funds, but the project readiness will depend on when the CDVG funds are actually released by DuPage County. In the last couple of years, in 2010, when the funds don't get released until late fall, so it can almost end up being an anxious project. Next on the list, by the most important project on here is Dachon Streethead, South Cap. We are...the contract status, the bid opening is set for April 26, 2019, on IDOT letting. The engineer's estimate for this is $2.6 million. We have ICA construction funds on this project at $933,000 that go to construction, and another $112,000 that funds construction engineering. Start date, we're anticipating July 5. Substantial completion is November 1 at this point, and then final completion has five working days to do all the punch list items. Scope of work would include pavement reconstruction on Addison and Serra Street, resurfacing on Wade Street, scamp...scamped sidewalk, sandbags, patches, landscaping, improvement electrical work, et cetera. Project will be constructed in one-way traffic during construction. So Phase One will have westbound traffic open to Green Street, and they will head north on Addison, and make a loop around Main Street, and come southbound on Center Street. And in Phase Two will switch that. Northbound traffic will go up on Center Street, head west on Main, and come south on Addison. So we'll...we'll stay with the flow of traffic pattern, and not the grocery mode traffic patterns, just the loops for championship. For short shared use path, this is from Grove to Irving Park Road. It's a carryover from last year's contract. We are currently slated for the April 26, 2019 letting. This has been delayed because of the complex right-of-way transaction we've been trying to deal with CVS. Construction date...construction cost is to be determined, but our engineer's estimate is about $1.3 million. We also have CMAC funding on this contract. We're anticipating this project will be in the construction in summer of 2019, and completed in fall of 2019. Scope of work will include off-street shared use path, utility relocation, box covered extension, pedestrian crossing gates, after rail tracks, and the major item of work is metrics related to the accurate pedestrian crossing, which will be the driving factor for completion of the project. 2018 annual residential streetlight project. This is actually a carryover from last year. I mentioned earlier that the funding doesn't become available till fall, which was the case in this project. So we're currently under construction on this contract. We are...the construction cost is $221,000. $200,000 is CDVG funded received, and it's a 50/50 project. So right now, the village is sharing $360,000. Start date, starting on February 14. This year, future is anticipated by experience, weather. Scope of work includes installation of 27 new streetlights, pavement resurrects protection. Again, a carryover from last year. We have completed all the earthwork and the pathwork around the facility. We are currently working on the mechanical and electrical improvements inside the pump station. The final completion is May 31, 2021. This also includes a period of maintenance and monitoring of all the vegetation that's planned around the facility. 2019 annual residential streetlight project. We applied for CDVG funds for this project last year. We were recommended for award. On contract status, design is forthcoming on this contract. Again, we've received $200,000 CDVG funds for this project. Fall 2019 is our start date at this point, pending the award of the contract from...and we anticipate substantial completion will be spring, summer 2020. Scope of work includes installation of a crosswind 35 new streetlights. The location of the project is actually 2018 water main project that we did last year. So it's between Jefferson and Washington on Mayrose, where it's at Marion. Sewer lining, this is one of the annual maintenance projects that we do. Highlighted areas is where we look into line this year. We are currently working with a contractor. The MFP bid that we went out in 2017, we had a two-year contract due at CPI increases. CPI increases for 2019. We're looking at contracts right now to look at we have in the month. Construction cost is not fixed at $20,000.
Sorry about that.
We anticipate this project will get underway in April 2019, and be completed by December. We're expecting to get about 7,200 feet of 8-inch sanitary sewer lining done, and about 100% of the services restated as part of the project. 2019 MFT HMA pavement maintenance project. This is something new that we started this year. We've always done pavement patching in the previous year. This year, we're actually expanding that on a little bit. What we wanted to do is resurface some of the streets that are in major needs, and also do some pavement patching as part of the project. Currently, this contract is under IDOT's review, and we're anticipating the bid opening will be on March 28. Construction cost at this point is not fixed at $30,000. Start date, May 1, and final completion June 30. Scope of work includes resurfacing of Grove Avenue between 83 and Church, and Bonshaw Avenue between Spruce and 83. We will also include some spot curb and gutter repairs and sidewalk repairs, as well as ADA improvements, striping, et cetera. And then we're also anticipating we'll get 3,000 square yards of 2-inch surface peaches as part of this contract. 2019 sidewalk R&amp;R project, again, a maintenance project that we do on annual basis. Contract status, it's preliminary in house design right now, and not to exceed $50,000. The highlighted areas is where we anticipate the sidewalk program to take place this year. Start date will be September 2019, with the final completion October 30. And it would include roughly about 67 hundred square feet of sidewalk removal and replacement. Caving striping, again, another maintenance project. Again, highlighted areas are where we concentrating on this year. We are currently in-house designing for this project, and the cost is not fixed at $25,000. Start date will be September 2019, and final completion will be October 30. And then this is, you know, up there on the tollway construction in 2019. We're anticipating about five projects? Six projects. Six projects either in construction or going out to start in August 2019. We've got a mainline contract from 83 to Thomas Drive. This is mainly off bridges along the tollway corridor. We've got landscaping contractors, a couple of different locations we're working on. We also have a tentative start date of interchange bridges at I-90 and I-490, starting in August 2019 possibly. And then interchange Irving Park and I-390, currently slated for September 2019 start. And then there's an advanced earthwork contract that's also in place right now on the Ower side. Is there any questions?
I think you say we got a lot of work ahead of us this construction season. That's a good thing. That's a sign that we're reinvesting into our neighborhoods. I do want to compliment Mahul, and I've done this before. I don't know of anyone who's gotten more grants for their community than Mahul does every single year. We were actually just up meeting with Congressman Christian Moore earlier today to talk about new grants that we could pull at the federal level. So Mahul, do you have that number of what you've pulled in last year or this year?
I don't remember the last year's, but this year's contract is just about $9.7 million with all the construction we're doing. And we have roughly about $3.1 million.
So, thanks for all your hard work, um, we've got a lot to look forward to, a lot to, uh, Ben and Grant, grin and bear it with this summer, uh, but in the end, when it's all done, it's, uh, good infrastructure projects for our community, so thank you. Does the board have any questions from Mahul?
Just let the record reflect that trustee Carmona arrived at six fifty-four PM.
Thank you.
Moving on, number two is a resolution authorizing the execution of change order number one with Detroit Salt Company LLC for the purchase of a hundred fifty tons of bulk rock salt in a not-to-exceed amount of ten thousand, seventy-two dollars, fifty cents for a revised amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred, forty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
There being a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
The quick and dirty is we've been using a lot of salts on the street lately. Uh, this has been a rough winter on our streets, um, so this is re-upping our, uh, salt amount so we can put it back in the dome.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Trustee Carmona?
Yes.
Trustee Franz?
Yes.
Trustee Jaworska?
Yes.
Trustee Lomax?
Yes.
Trustee Pena Cola?
Yes.
Trustee Perez?
Yes.
That's six.
The motion carries and the resolution is now approved. Uh, we do not have a report on the recreation under presidential remarks. Real quickly, this Saturday, March second, is our Honor Flight fundraiser hockey game at the Bensonville Edge Ice Arena. That's where the Chicago Police Department, uh, versus the Chicago FBI. The puck drops at seven o'clock. Tickets can still be purchased online or at the door. Uh, information about this event can be found on the village website. And also reminder that the senior and disabled grass cutting program registration is underway. Please complete the registration forms and return to public works. Space is limited, for more information or questions regarding the program, please call public works at six three zero, three five zero, three four, three five. Uh, village managers report.
Just have one item, kind of piggybacks on Mahul's item. Uh, we are very aware that this winter has been tough on our roads, uh, the roads need a lot of repair, um, so we do have public works crews out currently patch, not currently, but during the day, patching potholes. Um, we're asking that residents go onto our website and use the YourGov app to report those potholes to us. We may not know that they exist, so please, if you see one in front of your house or on your commute, let us know, and, uh, public works has assured me that they'll get out there and, uh, get those potholes. We'll also make Mahul's presentation today, um, available on our website, so residents can go there and delve deeper into the products that impact them directly. Other than that, I, uh, think that's it.
Uh, village attorney report?
I have no report, Mr. President.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the board tonight? Is there any new business to come before the board tonight? Do we have a need for executive session? No?
We do not, Mr. President.
Nope. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
There's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, we are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.